So this is the meeting of the planning board on April 1st, 2021. And I want to call the meeting to order and I want to begin with the reading of the governor's March 12th, 2020. Order, which I will defer to values that are well-practiced at this point.
All right. So pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30A subsection 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 orders imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. Thus, the meeting of the Hubbardston Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. The specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found at www.hubbardstonma.us. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the town's website an audio or a video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. And with that being said, the meeting is being recorded.
Great. Okay, so we do have our main order business tonight. This is a public hearing, but we have a few things to get out of the way first. So I'll call a meeting to order and we usually begin with public comments. So these are public comments not related to the 69 Gardner Road project, but other public comments. And our policy is please keep it under 3 minutes and direct all your angry about something to the board in general as opposed to individuals. And we just like to say, we can't generally respond, you know, or answer too many questions during this. But we take all comments seriously and we will endeavor to get answers to you. So having heard that, I know there's one person that requested that I expected to be here, and that's Mr. Jonathan Hall. Is he here?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Do you want to let him go first? Because it does not involve, it involves 36 Gardner Road. He can talk to the board. There was also a sort of a last minute message from him posted, which will convey the same concerns he has, so.
We have a member in attendance with John, J O N. So I just promoted him. If you want to take yourself off mute to make sure you're the right person.
John. Here.
Can you hear me?
There you are.
Hi, good evening.
Too, if you want to go public.
Excuse me?
We'd love to see you too. Don't want to be seen, it's all right.
No, that's fine. There we go.
So, thank you. So I don't know that anybody got a chance to read your letter. It was supposed to be kind of late. So why don't you explain who you are and what you're looking to do?
Members of the boards, my name is Jonathan Hall. I'm with Aaron Hall Management Corp., who currently has 36 Gardner Road under contract for purchase. And basically, we're in the, it's a family-run business, self-storage. We've got eight locations in Massachusetts and one in Maine. And we're doing our due diligence period right now for the property. So there was, there was two things I was looking forward to try to get information, since we did not go through the planning process with the board that was done by the seller. We're looking for clarification on one item and looking for the board's opinion on two changes we'd like to make, whether that would be a minor, it would be done as a field change, or if we'd have to go back through site plan. If you want, I can continue on, or if there's any questions?
Why don't you just, you know, we, we have to give, we'll probably not get to get to the answer tonight, but I know there were things you talked about. I think you could say in just a minute or.
Okay. All right, great. And the first clarification I'm looking for is the site plan that was approved has 10 buildings. Eight of the buildings are 40 feet wide with different lengths of the buildings and all of the storage units were, that were shown on the site plan were 10 feet wide, which is a standard width of a storage unit, but they all show as 40 feet long. So the seller has explained that during the planning process with your board, that it was mentioned that he didn't have a unit mix, but these were the footprints. So we're not asking to change the footprints of the existing building plans. We just want to be able to make sure we can put different sized units within those footprints. So instead of all 10 by 40s, we'd put in, you know, 10 by 30s, 25s, 10 by 20s, 10 by 10s, 5 by 5s, things like that, because everyone doesn't need a large unit. We have got, you know, customers looking for closet size all the way up to a 10 by 40.
Okay, and the other two items?
The other item is the proposed site plan only had one entrance. This is going to be a remote operated site. Our concern is for customer safety. If there's a customer on the property and the gate malfunction doesn't open, they'd be trapped within the property when, with no one being on the site. The second entrance would allow the customer to be able to go out through the entrance or the exit to leave the property.
Okay.
So we, I sent over a quick sketchup of where we'd move the gates to. And then the third one was, we were looking to have a remote kiosk or a vestibule where if a customer hasn't already signed up for a storage unit lease before they arrived at the facility, they would have a space to go to and getting to engage in the leasing process. So basically, it would just be a computer or a touchscreen tablet that we'd have set up there that they'd fill in the information and would be able to rent the unit right there, since they're already on site. So we'd want to get them inside out of the element. So there's a small building at the front of the property. The units, I believe, are 10 by 13. We take that space, use, you know, put in like an eight by eight area with a glass door. It would only be open during hours of operation that were defined by the town. And then the rest of the space would just be used for an electrical room for security equipment and things like that that have to be inside.
Okay, so what I would like to do, it's up to the board kind of, but he, this, there's some urgency to this, as I understand, because of the contract you're under. You haven't bought it yet. Like you're negotiating, these are important. So what I'm wondering is if we can ask Bill Murray, who's our advisor here, the planning port consultant, is he here? Is that clear, or is it Susan? Whether it would be possible for you to review these changes for us and report back on the 15th? And I did explain to Mr. Hall that although you're our consultant, the petitioner has to pay the fee for their review. Can you give him some idea of what that would cost and we'll have him send a check for that service?
It's only a couple hours worth of work. I'd say no more than $450.
Okay, can we get you to send that to us, Mr. Hall? We will send you a note from Bill, so you can have a receipt for a bill for it.
You need that.
Paid in advance.
Alice, you need to add the administrative fee.
And we, we had 15% as our administration fee did that. So they'll send us something in the mail and we will, in the email, and we'll forward it to him.
Very good.
Did Mallory tell you in writing what his plans are in the plan? Were you copied on that?
Yes.
Okay, so if we could get back to him. What do you see any problems with it? What's the process for correctly doing that? Maybe even advise him ahead of the meeting if he really needs to take additional action. But that's what I'd like to do and we're, we're happy to meet you and we'll try to help you with those.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
On the 15th, and Mallory's going to put you on the agenda for then. All right, thanks. So our next item of business are minutes, which I've already misplaced. And I had some corrections, so just give me a second. Oh, okay. We have minutes from February, January 7th to approve and minutes from January 21st to approve. And does someone want to make a, want to make a motion to approve the minutes of January 7th? And then I've got a couple of corrections on one of them.
Madam Chair, Christopher Monroe, motion to accept the minutes from the 7th.
And is there a second, somebody?
Madam Chair, this is Franz von Steiger. I am seconding this motion.
Okay, great. I do have a couple of points that I want to clarify and then we accept them as amendments unless anybody has a problem. So on the 7th, let's see, on the second page, third paragraph, with this A and R plan that you, the people that were here, I think everybody was there or remember it, it's the 106 Gardner Road property. They had a lot, it did have frontage actually on Gardner Road, but it also showed that it had frontage on High Ridge Road, which was a road that doesn't exist on, on the ground and is kind of, but it showed it existed because it does exist somewhere on some recorded plan. And we resolved it by having the surveyor put a note on the plan that we were not determining whether there was any frontage on High Ridge Road. So I just wanted to correct the minutes to say, next on the agenda, A and R Plan 106 Gardner Road, put in, if you would, Donna Warfield Realtor, because she was not one of the petitioners, and Robert and Sandra Charland, I guess is how you say the name. And then if you could add the next sentence, the board discussed and had concerns about frontage. Add in there, shown on High Ridge Road, which does not exist on the ground at that location. So should not be shown as a public way. The only reason is because if you leave it the way it is, it looks like it had no frontage and it actually did have frontage on Gardner Road, it just didn't have the frontage on High Ridge Road. So with that change, and then there's an unfinished sentence on the top of the third page. It says, 56 Gardner Road. Mr. Murray stated, the board did not accept the application. The applicant will resubmit the application in February or March. Mr. Murray submitted an invoice, which was in line with, and then the sentence isn't finished. I assume it's, I mean, Bill's here. I assume it, which was in line with his estimate? Or some way to finish that sentence?
Yeah, I'll figure out what she was trying to say in that.
All right, if it's just a matter of putting in, in line with his quote or estimate. Okay. So those are my corrections of the maker and the mover. Any, any other corrections, anybody?
Madam Chair, there's one additional correction on the third page, which I would like to present.
Yeah.
One moment, please, let me get to it. It's just a spelling mistake here. Under the section on the new business, and not the first bullet item, but actually the second one where it says proposed revision of Article 20. On the second line, it says noted, she would like to amend the large-scale foot overtake law, bylaw, require better, instead of sitting or it's, and I'm, I thought it would be citing, it's S I G H T I N G.
Is that right, or is it S I T I N G?
That was my question, because I think it's, I may be wrong, so I'm just quite, I'm just asking if this should have been.
Mallory, can you look it up and fix the spelling?
Sure.
Again, it is, it is misspelled. It may not be.
There's also another misspelling on the, this is again on the seventh, the second, last line of the second page, B E R M, which is the second to the last line there is spelled B E R M, not B U R M. All right, making those corrections, can we vote to accept, or can we take a vote on accepting the minutes with those corrections, unless there's any objection from maker or seconder?
No.
Okay, somebody want to start? Go ahead.
I will, I will ask, yes, on Franz von Steiger.
Livedal eye.
Monroe eye.
Bill?
I wasn't present at the meeting, but I read them and it sounded acceptable. I'll make it.
Okay.
I'll vote in favor.
Great. So as amended there, they're passed and then the draft minutes, we're getting closer to being right on time here. January 21st. Minutes, someone want to make a motion to accept them?
Madam Chair, this is Franz von Steiger. Would like to put a motion that we accept the minutes of January the 21st, 2021.
A second, somebody?
Christopher Monroe with a second.
Okay, I do have a couple of corrections on this too. Maybe other people do too. My two are, in the paragraph on the first page with all the bullet points under Mrs. Bernie explained, the second to the last bullet point says, there is no land available to develop without constraints. I mean, I think that she said there was no commercial land available to develop without constraints. Does anybody else's recollection?
That's what I remember too, Alice.
If you could insert the word "commercial."
Yeah.
And then on the second page, this kind of, then there's a 56 Gardner Road. It cites that Mrs. Livedal noticed the invoice and the invoice amount is $34,000 stated. Is that correct?
No, that's not correct.
Got to be $3,400.
Yeah.
And a 15% administration fee.
Yeah.
If you could correct.
Yeah, I'll fix that too.
Okay, anybody else have corrections? additions? Hearing none? Want to vote? Livedal eye?
Tiger eye.
Bill Holman's eye.
Monroe eye.
Okay, moving right along to our main order of business tonight. Which is our, actually our only real action item for tonight. And that is a public hearing on 69 Gardner Road. Trying to get this announced correctly. Which is a hearing on a special permit and site plan review application filed by Royal Sun Farm, whose principal is Damon Schmidt. We will read, I'll have Mallory read the notice of the hearing into the record. And then we'll give Mr. Schmidt a chance to speak to his project. I know we have a number of members of the public. We'll give them a chance and especially a butters if they're here and wish to speak. Then if nobody has objections to the order of things, we'll let our places associates, whether that's Bill or Susan, who wrote the report, speak. And Mr. Damon can reply and then members of the planning board can weigh in. And then we'll decide what we want to do at that point, whether it's continue the hearing or vote or the next point. So having heard that, you want to read the the publication into the record, Mallory?
So in accordance with provisions of the master general law and Hubbardston's zoning bylaw, Article 22, the Hubbardston Planning Board shall hold a public hearing Thursday, April 1st, 2021 at 6:30 PM. As provided for under the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30A, subsection 18, the planning board shall meet virtual to consider a special permit slash site plan application of Damon Schmidt, Royals and Farm for recreational marijuana cultivation. The subject property, 69 Gardner Road, Assessor Map 5, Parcel 153, consisting of 19.3 acres, is located within a commercial slash agricultural district. Which, this is a split zone to parcel. Damon, is there anyone else I need to make a panelist for you? Is it just yourself tonight?
On mute, sorry about that. I had our head grower Ron joining. I don't know if he is.
I don't see him, but if he hops on, then I'll make.
If I, if he joins, I'll let you know.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, just before Damon, just before you start, I just want to also tell the public that this, I think, use the main plans that were submitted and they're available to review online. There, your completed application form for the special permit and a description of the proposed use and a butters list, an environmental community impact analysis, and the plan for 69 Gardner Road driveway improvements. So the public can view those. Okay, so I know that you've talked about this plan and it's been worked on and there are still some issues that need to be worked out. But I don't think the butters have been here before to actually hear the whole proposal. So if you want to talk about the proposal, that would be a good place to start, I think.
All right, great. I'm just texting Ron right now. All right, sorry about that. All right, so do you want to basically just kind of give a highlight of what we're doing or like, all right? All right, everybody. Hi, Damon Schmidt, Royal Sun Farm. So what we are planning to do at 69 Gardner Road is have what's called a tier six outdoor cultivation. So we'll be growing marijuana cannabis backfield there. Be in a secure, enclosed fenced-in area. We do have security. I won't go into too much of our security, but we do have the entire area by the Cannabis Control Commission's regulations have to be covered by camera, not just covered, but recorded. Our cameras are monitored. We can actually speak through our cameras or the monitoring company can. So it's a very sophisticated system. And I'll address my neighbor. The reason why we're putting up do not trespass signs everywhere in the woods is not because of you. It's because we're required to, because we are a closed facility to the public. The public is not allowed on our property. By law, when you put up a do not trespass sign, I believe it's 50 feet from the last do not trespass sign, you have to put it up and you enclose your entire parcel with that. So I'll get to that later, but to my neighbor, it's not because of you guys. So basically, we're in a closed facility. We're only open, I would say, or in business, if you will, for about six months out of the year. So we have what's called a early strains of our, our product. So we don't wait until, you know, October, mid-October to take in our harvest. We start in the beginning of September, so we could grow what's called early strains. Then what happens is we take down our harvest. We follow the cannabis control regulations to weigh the product and then we will put them in our freezer trailers. Before we do that, we will test the product and then we will move our trailers to another town. So that's kind of the process from there. We don't expect much traffic. As I said, we're closed to the public, so you can't just pop in and look at our lovely fields. Besides that, you know, I'm open to questions. I know that was kind of a high level. I guess I'll just address some concerns, might as well, while I'm at it. I guess it looks like there's some concerns about our water level. You know, I said 10,000 gallons a day because that was, you know, the most that we would use on the hottest day of the summer, which happens, you know, one, two or three days a year. We should be around 3,000 gallons a day. You know, if it's raining, if it's not really that hot out, maybe we're using 2,000 gallons for in the middle of the summer, maybe it's 4,000 gallons. And a lot of that depends on, you know, what cycle or what part of the growth stage the plan is in. To give you some definition or some, some reference, I should say, an average home of four uses 400 gallons of water a day. So if anyone's concerned that 3,000 gallons of water a day is going to run you well dry, just Google for yourself, how many gallons of water do I use when I water my lawn? And if everybody watered their lawn, ran their neighbors well dry, we'd have a real problem. Or put it into another perspective, when somebody fills up their pool, does everybody in town run out of water? But we don't, we'll address that. They had some concern about us not telling anybody. So we meter our water. We have to report that to Cannabis Control Commission. I think we also report that to the select board in Hubbardston and every other town we do. So we also do that because we add nothing bad. But, you know, we have fertilizers. I brought my head grower Ron on. Ron on, he can actually talk about, you know, what we have. But, you know, we know exactly on, I got an email, Ron, we know exactly, you know, how many gallons we're using because we have to add the exact amount of nutrients. So we're going to keep track of that and we'll share that with the select board, planning board. We don't have a problem. And to put this more in perspective, say I go to my, middle of my property, which isn't near any wetlands, not near any vernal pools. Or I go to my neighbor's property and I just start growing hemp or tomatoes. In Massachusetts, you can pull 99,999 gallons a day out of your property before you have to start pulling any permits. Now, I'm not a lawyer. I'm definitely not Bill. So I don't know how exactly true that is on which property. But I know if you Google that, it's going to come up in Massachusetts, because I looked into that in Royalston. As we were planning at one point, we still made a massive hemp farm that will use up to that amount per day. That would dwarf anything we're talking about here. Another concern that one of the neighbors has, besides me yelling at your Realtor, which we can get into that, is I guess security. Our product isn't really worth anything except for a couple weeks out of the year. We've already talked to the fire chief. They've already given us a price and we basically already agreed that they are going to do some overnight details when this starts getting worth any money. So besides the 24-hour security, we're going to have a nice police car parked there on many of the night. So that should make you guys feel a little bit better. And we are going to get into that. They said, they said, they said, we definitely didn't burn any stumps on our property. But in terms of the generators, we are going to have a system where we have batteries. And we're going to have it run off of the generator. So far, we've got a 12,000 watt coming and then we're going to try to get a 30,000 watt. Believe it or not, the larger you go, the quieter your generator is. That has to do with something about engines, liquid cooling. The bigger you go, you get liquid cooling. So those generators run off of propane. RJ McDonald is installing those, a local company. Those generators obviously run by the propane will charge the battery. We are doing that so that we can charge the battery, so the generator's not running at night. These generators, I put my decibel levels in this latest response. We got the response, I don't know, 36 hours ago. So we tried our best to get it back to you. We're going to have to add some things to it, but the decibel levels are in there. It's quite low. It's around 60, 20, something feet, 23 feet. Nearest resident is 800 feet. I actually had a graph. I did this in Royalston because we have so many big fans sticking out of our greenhouse that they were concerned about the decibel level, even though we're near Canada in Royalston or middle of the woods. But I still did it. So by the time I do a response, I will update you and let you know, you know, 800 feet away, what does this sound like? Is it a hairdryer? Is it, you know, a drink, you know, coming out of your faucet? So I can update that, but I don't think it's going to be anything. We really like to put solar panels on top of the trailers, the temporary trailers, and those are temporary solar panels, you know, screw them down so they don't fly off and hit anybody in the head. But they would also help charge the batteries. So that's kind of our utility system. We're going to have a well. We got national grid coming in at some point. The work order's in the way. We'll have an argument later if we can connect our trailers to that. I know there are trailers in Massachusetts connected to electricity, but it's not really a concern of ours right now. We'll, we'll cross that bridge when we do. Our well obviously runs off of national grid. Our well is part of farming. We have a right to use electricity for our well. And our trailers, there was concern going around of diesel making noise, et cetera, et cetera. Our freezer trailers run off of diesel as well as off of electricity. So the diesel trailers, freezer trailers, you see them on the highway all the time behind a truck, 53 feet long, the big 18-wheelers. Those freezer trailers are not on until harvest time. Right before harvest time, we turn them on, sample our product, get it tested. And I don't sample it. We take a sample and send it to get tested. Those test results get logged into metric. The moment it gets logged into metric, I believe we can move those trailers and those trailers will move out of here. So maybe they're on for a week, maybe less, maybe more, but they'll be on. And then our other trailer, we can just, you know, it's our security trailer where all of our computers are for the security system. And then we have a storage unit and all that storage unit is for is for bad products. We have to put it in there till we destroy it. So those are our trailers. There was some concern about the generators and the noise. And in terms of our plans saying we have an existing driveway, that's because we did an RDA and we had a public meeting. And the wonderful people from the DCR sent me a letter saying I can put in my 600-foot driveway. So the reason why it says existing driveway is because we have an existing driveway. And that is all the comments I think I got from my neighbors. Oh, my other neighbor came over and said, they actually came over. This is my neighbor with the cows. They're good people. So they came over and they were concerned after talking with some people that, you know, we could pollute their well, you know, what we have runoff is going to kill their cows or something. So I brought Ron, my head grower, on to talk about, you know, what we can use. It's not really my area of expertise. I will tell you this, from an owner, I know that if I had a tomato farm, I could use pesticides. I could use all sorts of stuff, which once I found out about it, I'm glad I don't really eat tomatoes. But, you know, in, in growing marijuana, the Cannabis Control Commission and M D A R regulate us way more than they do if I was growing tomatoes. So we're really regulated and it's actually unfair because we can't use pesticides, not that we want to, but stuff that you can spray on tomatoes to get rid of bugs, we can't spray. So we're really limited that way. So we're really limited that way, but I'll, you know, I'll let Ron talk about that when anybody has a question. So, that is my very short, brief story that went longer than expected. So there you go.
Okay, um. Bill, you don't have any objection to my taking the butters and the other members of the public first, do you? Then you can, give you a chance to reply. Yeah, Bill Murray.
No, I.
Okay, okay, I think that the public needed to know what the plan was in case they were new to it, so that's why I wanted him to go first. All right, so, um, I know Mallory says there are. I don't know whether there are butters, they can identify themselves as such, but there are people waiting to speak in response to, uh, to our advertisement of this. Um, project. You wanna?
Yeah, so we actually have, Tom Bracco has his hand up, so I'll go ahead and promote him.
Okay. Good evening, Tom Bracco.
Well, there you go, we all set?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, um, I, one thing I wanna clarify, it wasn't me that called him about the cows.
Oh, no, 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 Tom, Tom, no, I understand. Now, definitely, you know, that was, it wasn't referred to that, it was somebody, you know, had mentioned something to the effect of my neighbor who's planning on having cows that. Possibly we might be doing something that could, you know, sicken their cows.
Okay, um, my question is with these trailers and stuff, are they being run off the National Grid power? Or are they gonna only be running on generators?
Well, that's gonna be a question that we're gonna solve in a couple weeks to a couple months when I get my lawyers involved, but for right now. Uh, the plan is, is again, they, these trailers or the, the reefer trailers, they only run during harvest time. So they're only gonna run in September, um, you know, or October, you know, all depends, yeah, but September. Um, and they're hybrid, so they can run off of diesel or they can run off of electricity. So, you know, we're gonna let my electrician and, you know, RJ McDonald and the powers that be tell me. If I should run it off diesel or if I should run it off the generator and the propane, which is gonna be more cost efficient. Um, but by the time September rolls around, we would have done our due diligence. And, and we're gonna figure out if you can use electricity for farming and agriculture. My guess is you can, but. Hope that answers your question, you know, we're, we're gonna try, but right now, you know, the building inspector says we can hook up electricity to the trailer. So, I don't know. A permanent electricity, but, so I don't know, we're, I'm, you know, it's a bridge I'm not crossing tonight, but. May not, not, nothing, nothing with you, but I'm just saying, it's, it's something that doesn't matter for my operations and the reason why is the Cannabis Control Commission. You know, makes us have a backup generator in case electricity goes out. The only real difference that I'm doing in my planning is I am now having a second generator to back up my first generator. But the second generator doesn't, you know, always run. Um, and I don't actually need a thirty thousand kilowatt generator, it's just quieter. And what I'm gonna do is I need a thirty thousand kilowatt generator in Royalston and in Templeton, so I can move it just to another site at any point. Does that answer your question? I know it's kinda rambling.
Yeah, that does, my comment, my additional comment is to the planning board members. Is that, you know, these generators and these coolers running in the September, a cool September night, all night long. The noise carries a long, long way, so I would just ask them to really think about that. Before they uh, approve this system. And my other question is, it shows on your plans and, and it says written in your plans that the, this is gonna be eight hundred feet. To the closest road or something?
I, 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 I think I'm coming up with eight hundred feet off the top of my head, I don't know if it says in our plans, but I think it was eight hundred feet from. The trailer to the closest residence, I think. I know, go ahead.
Because the, the question I have, and this is one for Bill Murray, maybe you address. Is the location of the commercial district, which the marijuana can only be grown in the commercial district. Is five hundred feet back from the street and I would just like to have Bill comment whether or not he's checked to see.
Where do you see that, though? Like, where does it say that?
It's in the ti- it's in the by, town bylaws, it's in the zoning board laws.
I'm gonna have, Tom, I will have Bill address that issue with the split lot and there is a, the fifty-foot. Uh, I mean, it's something that is on my list to have him respond to.
Okay, so that's just a concern I have.
In that residential portion of it. And it may be something we can't resolve tonight as well, but it's, it's not a new issue.
But, so the, the commercial zone is only to five hundred feet from the, from sixty-eight. So as long as everything he was planning to do is within that zone, I, I suppose he can do it, but uh. If it's not, then that has to be looked at, I just asked, I'm just asking someone to verify that, that's all.
Well, stick around and we will have Bill answer that question. Another, um, provision of the zoning that specifically addresses split lots. And extending the use from one into the next. Uh.
Hmm.
That does, and also we do allow, of course, marijuana cultivation in residential zone as well, just.
Only up to twenty thousand, we, only twenty thousand square, square feet.
Right.
Anything above twenty thousand square feet has to only be in a commercial zone. That's uh, what the bylaw says.
Okay, I'm gonna have Bill address that as soon as he's off. I wouldn't, wanna let other butters have a ta- a chance, so.
Yeah, well done, thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Yeah, thanks, Tom, stick around.
I will cook my supper.
Okay, do we have other?
We do, we have one more, Maya Sivigni, promote.
She's the one that wrote the letter to the board, yes, okay, um. Have her, have her come in and address the concerns that she addressed in the letters. And introduce yourself, please, as to where you are in relation to the project.
Yeah, th- this is Gordon and Maya, so we're, uh, butters to the field where, where this is all transpiring. So, um, I wrote, uh, my wife wrote the letter, but I'll respond to some of, some of Damon's, uh, comments, I guess. So, um, we did speak with the people on sixty-three Garden Road. Never mentioned anything about, uh, pollution or pesticides to them at all. So I'm not sure where you got that. Um. Our concerns are environmental, uh, water issues, so I built my house out here. Um, twenty years ago. I wanted to put a trailer on my property, the town would not allow me to do that because they do, do not permit that. I wanted to put a trailer while I was building my house to prevent theft and things like that. And, um, the town would not allow me to do that. So, my other issue is I have trail cameras up, cause I'm a hunter. I have, this project hasn't even kicked off yet. And I have an average of forty people on trail camera that I have no idea who they are, walking through my property. So I know, I, I know, I know you have, uh, security around your property that's gonna take place, but what are you gonna do? For security around the, the people around you that's drawing all these people coming, walking through?
Yeah, I, I don't know about the forty people that, you know, walk through and.
Have them all on, on a digital, digital slide, I can show.
Understand, I mean, before we started this, I was up on that project, I saw people going through that property with, uh. Dirt bikes, uh, ATVs, uh, people routinely walk, uh, from the. Uh, DCR property next door where there's a trail, uh, through our property, through the back trail, through the other DCR property. Um, they routinely have done that and they did that before. We started putting up our fence or before we even did anything with the marijuana, people for years have been going through this property. So, I, I mean, I, I, I'm not doubting that there's forty people going through your property, but to say they're going through now because of us. I mean, you know, that's something, but, but I, let's address your, your, your situation. We've got the entire place lit up with cameras. We've got our do not trespassing signs all over the place. They're about to be followed by limited access area signs that we have to put up for the Cannabis Control Commission. They're about to be stopped by a second fence at some point. That has a windbreak where you can't see in, so you no longer get to see the first fence. In between those two is like a kill zone where the police can drive around in my go-kart and they can make sure that everything's okay. So anybody comes to our site, they're basically walking into a situation that's more protected than a bank. So, y- you know, I, I don't see anything Ocean Eleven here with people coming in in a helicopter and then for whatever reason, running over to your house to say hello. Um, but you know, I, I just don't see it, I mean, I don't see kids, you know, you know, running around, you know, trying to catch a peek of it. And if they do, they're gonna get yelled at, I mean, they're not gonna do it twice.
Yeah.
But I understand, I understand what you're saying, you're worried about like, uh, you know, we're different, like, we're not a retail store, so I know Bowie's listening, all the dangers across the street. I'm just kidding, you know, we're, we're not like a, uh, you know, a place that, you know, people are trying to rob. Um, you know, and if they do, they're, you know, they're coming at night and they're gonna run into, uh, you know, a security system.
Yeah, so, so I don't know if you, if you're familiar, there was actually two gentlemen, two years ago in Hubbardston, that broke into a facility. Yeah, and loaded up their box truck full of they thought was marijuana.
Yeah.
So, i- it's.
I know, that's awesome, and you know why they did that?
Yeah.
They showed up there, they didn't see razor wire and barbed wire and over, you know, fifty cameras.
Yeah. Be, being that point, it, it's drawing people through my property already. And, and that property was my in-laws' property, I know there was people going through there all the time.
Yeah.
Was permitted to, to view the, do that, but now it's not permitted. So.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think people will slowly stop doing it, I mean, we, you know, we covered, uh. You, you know, there's now rock barriers, there's some big boulders, I'm not sure if you walked over there, but there's some big boulders that are, you know. Really blocking the, uh, the access from the back of our property into the woods. Um, and then we blocked off, and we didn't mess up the stone wall or anybody, we did it in front of it. And then we have big boulders that's, you know, now blocking off, um, you know, the DCR property, so. You know, that puts an end to anybody with the ATVs, dirt bikes. You know, so they're gonna come and they're gonna come once, realize they can't do it and they're not gonna come back again. Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, we control our property.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, the aspects of you're gonna have lighting all the way around at night. You're gonna have, have patrols going on. Um, you're gonna have generators running, I can hear, I'm, I'm way away from sixty-eight. And then in the summertime, I can hear cars going up and down sixty-eight. Let alone, you hear, you know. Loud tra- loud motorcycles and things like that.
Yep.
Or that, that.
No, I understand what you're saying about the generators, but I don't know if you heard, but you know, our plan is to have batteries, so the generators don't run at night. That, that, that's the plan of the batteries. Now, Gordon, you guys love writing emails, you could write an email to the, uh, the building commissioner and say, hey. All the neighbors really want Damon to connect the national grid, so he can stop this silly generator idea. You know, hey, maybe, maybe people wanna do that, but you know, we're playing the card that we're playing, this is agriculture, so, you know. We're.
Excuse me, this is Alice Livedall, you had mentioned in your opening comments a noise study? Did you not?
A noise study, oh, well, just in Royalston, we, uh, so everything's on decibel levels. So if you have the decibel levels and you know the distance between something, so that's what I was gonna go do is, I'm gonna. Say this is where Gordon's house is and I'm gonna say, this is the decibel level of this exact specific kilowatt generator. And this is what it's gonna sound like, if it's sounding like anything, so we can definitely do that.
Please submit, submit that maybe on some kind of a plan where you had a circle. From if the generator was here, the noise at the circumference of the circle.
Yeah.
The decimal, cause there are standards for noise, so I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Can be objectively addressed, and the other thing that I think, couple of things he raised, that they raised in their letter. Which I think are reasonable to ask is, first of all, you've, you've addressed the water issues and we would. If, you know, what, and if we put this together as an opinion, probably put some. You know, it's gotta be a better description of the water used, used, anticipated use on a daily basis. And it did, um, I think it wasn't her letter, but someone addressed what kind of sprinkler system.
Oh, yeah, that's, um, I'm actually, you know, I'm gonna, I think I can answer this one, it's just gonna be simple, but Ron is on, but. You know, it's a, uh, like a drip system. So maybe, I don't know, you wanna, uh, Mallory, you wanna elevate Ron Baldwin here? To the panelists list, he can kinda give you an idea, and while Ron's on, he can just talk about, you know, our, our watering system and then what we're gonna add to everything. Cause I know people are concerned about that. The other thing I wanna say before Ron talks is one thing in the letter I didn't address. Is, but it says it looks like they tried to reroute the culvert under the crossing, we a hundred percent didn't do that. Um, we also didn't bury any stumps, we don't mess with our soil, that'd be stupid. And then, uh, we definitely didn't tell anybody we weren't taking down trees and we didn't make any promises to anybody. And I don't know who they said is, but I, that's the thing, so that's it.
Sorry, I got, I just got booted there for a second, um, I can address the, uh, water issue. Um, what we're gonna, what the plan to do.
Your name, please.
Uh, Ron Baldwin.
Good, thank you.
Uh, what our plan is to do is we're gonna be doing a full drip irrigation system. Um, with a water soluble fertilizer, um, that is, uh, on the, uh, safety data sheets. States that the environmental hazards are zero, the OSHA defined hazards are zero. And, um, it's basically your standard, uh, powder fertilizer that gets mixed with. Uh, the water through a fertigation dosatron system that will feed directly to the plants. And what our plan is to do a, what's called a low flow, uh, runoff, which states that. We're gonna be, uh, running about a half a gallon every hour or so to each individual plant. Which allows the soil and the plant roots to then uptake the water to ru- uh, reduce runoff. And the, each plant, we're, we're approximately in beginning of summer, gonna be running upwards to. Three thousand gallons, so, uh, which is, um, for each plant gets basically, uh, one gallon a day. Um, midsummer, it might bump up to a gallon and a half per plant. But we have planned for, uh, holding tanks for the water storage. So we're not constantly sucking off of our well to, um, save on that as well.
Thank you, to, to explain what a drip system looks like, it drips from above, drips from below.
Oh, what it is, is going to be a two or a three inch lo- uh. Basically hose that runs from our water tanks along the cart path. And off of that hose runs an additional, it's a half inch diameter hose. That will run next to each of the plants and drip specifically next to each plant. In a, uh, pattern that is pre-designed for our plant layout.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Ron, could you, could you explain the plant layout and the rows? There was some concerns from some of the neighbors that we're gonna have some tractors and making a bunch of noise. But it's basically, we're walking up and down the rows doing stuff by hand or.
Yeah, every, like, we, we're gonna have a small, I think we're figuring like eight to nine foot cart path. Just to be able to access things more easily instead of just, uh, walking from one end of the field to the other. But each row is going to have a two foot space in between each column. To allow for a person to walk down and maintain the plants in general. There isn't gonna be any driving like a, a normal field where a tractor's making loops and loops and loops. Once we get the field tilled and rode, that's gonna be the last time that a tractor is run in there. Specifically.
Is he harvested by hand, too?
Yep, harvested by hand, like I said, we'll have a, we'll have a couple of gar- uh, golf carts. And maybe an ATV with a small cart attached to the back of that, but other than that, it's all hand.
I've always wanted one of those.
Damon, can you also, thank you very much, uh.
Not a problem.
Ron Baldwin, just before we. It, we turn it off to other people on the board to speak, um, can you address? The dark, the lighting issues, cause you say we're gonna have lights everywhere, but you don't mean. But are you also gonna have dark fields, right, so people need to understand how, what you mean there.
Yeah, I don't understand what you mean by lights everywhere, did we say that?
Yes.
What it is, is the plants during the, uh, their flower photo period, they need complete darkness. So our cameras have a night vision accessibility to them, so it's not like there's going to be spotlights everywhere. So that it's lit up like the Fourth of July, the, the plants wouldn't be able to, uh, produce properly with that.
So somebody walks by the field at night, what happens? Does any light come on or a little red?
I think in all fairness, uh, Alice, to the security of what they're trying to put together here. We really shouldn't talk about that upfront online here during the meeting, I don't think it's something to throw out there for everybody to hear. Um, this is something we can do at another, at another place other than putting it online for anybody to listen to.
Concerned that they're, they're.
Well, I guess I could answer your question about the lights for the concern for the neighbors.
Yeah.
We're not gonna have constant lights on, I guess is the question. So, you know, if someone's breaking in, I don't know, we'll probably have some light shine on them. But so far, there hasn't been any break-ins in Massachusetts in any cultivation facilities.
Have like security lights, like blazing.
No, we don't have anything on.
Lots or the, okay.
No.
Okay.
We don't have any electricity. Just a joke, just a joke. Write the letter, Gordon. Come on, send it to the commissioner. Tell him we need electricity.
All right, well, um, there are a lot of concerns that Bill raised in his letter. I know it was late to you and then your response was even later. I got it like forty-five minutes ago. So, um, but I think we should, proceed and let Phil, uh, state his concerns and you can respond to that.
I have one question in regards to the electricity. How come you haven't applied for electricity? Or why are they denying you?
No, 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 I mean, we are, like, we have national grid. I mean, no one can stop me from running my well on national grid. Um, you know, I, we do have national grid in the works. It's gonna come. All I know is the building commissioner told somebody that, uh, that we're not gonna be allowed to hook up permanent electricity to temporary trailers. I'm sure there's a legal way around that. Not too worried about it. We're gonna get there. I just, I've got two law firms I can call that are like my real estate law firms. So I'm waiting to hear where we go with this whole cannabis use thing before I start, you know, thousand dollar an hour stuff. Um, but I'm gonna get to it. Believe me, we, we need electricity, but you know, the Cannabis Control Commission makes us have backup generators anyhow. So, you know, I just, I need to get plants in the ground. I'm not gonna start a fight or a war over electricity at this moment, but it's coming.
I would much rather you have, you have electricity than generators running all night.
Oh, me too, me too. But we'll get there. I've never heard of that. I've never heard of farming not being able to have electricity. And I can't believe that there's no temporary farming structures in Massachusetts that are allowed electricity. And once you have your lawyers get involved in that, we'll see where this heads up, but it's not a fight I wanna have right now, you know what I mean?
What I was, what I was told about, like, I wanted to have a trailer so I could stay in just a mobile home trailer while I was building my house.
I've always wanted to live in one of those temporarily. Actually, I wanna Winnebago.
So, so anyhow, the town not allow me to do that because that's their zoning laws.
Yeah, so why you?
No, what about the guy who has like a hundred, uh, trailers across the street from us? Across from the, uh, you know, the, the a hundred buses that are parked next to us. There's a hundred buses that are right across the street or near a hundred trailers. You know, where you go get free wood and I get great internet service on my cell phone? They're putting, that's a thirty-six star in the road where they're putting in the, uh, traffic, yeah.
We're, we're getting off the
Off track.
Off the issue here we are. And, um, I don't, I think it's very important that we hear what Bill has to say and that the other members of our board get to ask questions and that we make a plan about where we go from here. So I'm gonna recognize, um, Bill Murray from Places, et cetera, who has reviewed the proposal. And Bill, if you can focus on the primary concerns you have, um, that's, that's a starting place.
Okay. Alice, as you know, um, you reached out to town council to get a ruling because we said we really didn't know how to proceed with this review, which unique. Because Mr. Schmidt has said that this is an agricultural activity. Um, so for the public's benefit, town council came back and said, under zoning, under the zoning act, the legislature says that, uh, the growing of marijuana is a commercial use. It is not a protected agricultural use. And that's very important because agricultural uses under the zoning act are exempt from an awful lot of the standards. Commercial uses are not. So because this is a commercial use, it is not protected agriculturally under zoning. And, and we can split hairs when we talk about the Conservation Commission and the DCR and some other regulations. That's not ruled by the zoning act. Our zoning bylaws are. So for the purposes of our review, this is a commercial use. It doesn't get the protections that agricultural uses are afforded under zoning. And that's really important for us.
And I know that.
I'd like, can I just interrupt? I'd like to make a point that I asked for the town's attorney to be on tonight's meeting. Last week, I CC'd my lawyer. If we're gonna start, you know, talking law, I think the town's attorney should have been on here. Cause I, I, I mean, I'll, I'll, after Bill speaks, I'll speak, but I'm gonna read right off of the website of, you know, Massachusetts. And, you know, from our standpoint, the zoning act, it's pretty clear, says we're not allowed agricultural exemptions. It doesn't say that marijuana is an agricultural use, just says we're not allowed exemptions. But I think we should have the attorneys talk about this. I should have my two law firms talk to the town's attorney like I requested. And that was last week, I think, and earlier this week. But. Yeah. Well, yeah, I, well.
You are a commercial use under the zoning bylaw, period.
Well, it says for zoning compliance in this letter, it says the outdoor community may just consider it commercial use, not agriculture use. I don't know if that's a statement. I mean, I want my lawyers to look at that. It says for zoning compliance. That means all compliance.
Okay.
All, all that that forty B says is that you can't use the agricultural exemption. And we're not asking for exemptions, but I'm not a lawyer. I want the lawyers to talk about it.
Maybe.
Argue about later.
But let's have Bill explain for the edification of the board and the public, the particular, um, cause he does so in his opinion, but the particular issues where if you're in agricultural use, you have to comply. I mean, a, 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 a commercial use and a commercial zone, you have to comply. And where you might, if you were growing, you know, say a, a standard um, crop, you would not have to comply. So we understand where these are. I, I understand from reading this and I haven't spent a lot of time, a lot of time studying it, but I know the issues are parking regulations that govern commercial enterprise, uh, access, uh, and those issues. And maybe if you could address which those issues specifically are, we can get an opinion from town council, whether there's any, I mean, I did read the whole case that came out of Carrollton. Um, there is a little bit of, um, I mean, they're not directly the issues. We're not saying like they were saying is, um, you can't have an, this, that this is not agriculture, uh, in the sense that they were. They were trying to prohibit um, the growing of marijuana in a commercial area and we're not.
And otherwise, in a town that operates the, the growing, right?
Right.
They're doing an end run.
So if you could walk through the issues that affect this sort of interface between the agricultural standards apply to the commercial standards apply, um, then people can understand what the issues are better, including me.
Okay, well, one of the big ones, which, uh, Tom Brecko kinda mentioned briefly, this is a split lot. So the the commercial district goes back approximately eight hundred feet from the center line of the road. Um, according to the submitted plan. And they are allowed any type of marijuana cultivation activity under our zoning bylaws within the commercial district. But the lot is split and the back portion of the lot um, is a residential zone. And you're only allowed under our bylaws, a tier one or a tier two license in a residential zone. A tier one is up to five thousand square feet and the tier two is five thousand and one square feet to ten thousand square feet. And the applicant's asserting that because he's a tier six, he has a license for one through six, and that's not the way we read the cannabis control regulations. Each tier has certain amount of regulations attached to it. Sure, as you get bigger, you've got more regulations, but they actually issue you a license for a tier for your development. So growing more than ten thousand square feet in the residential district exceeds our zoning bylaw, which allows you a tier two growing of up to ten thousand square feet. So we think that's a pretty big issue.
Can I, can I comment on that real quick? I think I can clear this all up for everybody.
Before you do that. Yes, I will let you comment, but I would like Bill to answer how he, he believes, and again, maybe we do need a little opinion this on too, but on the split lot provision works in this case.
How I believe that you're, you're allowed to extend the more restrictive use. In this case, you're allowed to extend the less restrictive use, which is commercial, fifty feet into the more restrictive use, so fifty feet into the residential district. He can, under our bylaws, says you can do that. But anything beyond that, you must comply with the bylaw.
So, given that reading, would you say he can have the, the greater density of the plants for like more than five thousand square feet of cannabis in?
He, he can exercise the ability to, to do a tier six, which is fifty thousand square feet, including that fifty feet, up to fifty thousand square feet.
So to get his farm up to the sixth, tier six, he can plant up to fifty feet into the residential zone.
That's, that's our opinion. Yeah.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification. Okay, so Damon, you can now speak on this issue.
All right, so I can understand, and I, I have an email from the CCC today that I, I think would clear this up. Um, but I, I think just the confusion comes from, well, I don't know if there's any confusion. I, I guess they're just, I don't know. Here's what we're gonna do and I'll just explain to you. And this is just how it is. We have an agreement with the town of Harvesting for tier six. The definition of tier six is forty thousand and one to fifty thousand square feet. Now, it's pretty simple math. Between zero and fifty thousand, there is zero and forty thousand. There's forty thousand other numbers. Those other numbers are made up of tier one, tier two, tier three, tier four, and tier five. As we stand tonight, because of this Vernal Pool hundred foot area, which I didn't anticipate eighteen months ago, we probably won't have fifty thousand square feet. We probably won't get to forty thousand square feet. Ron gave you the bad news that he thinks there's only three thousand plants. That's lower than what I want. Because he doesn't think we got that much room. He thinks we got maybe thirty-five thousand square feet of cannabis. Now, is thirty-five thousand square feet between forty thousand and one fifty thousand? It's not. It's a tier five license. But we're gonna grow with it. We have approval from the Cannabis Control Commission to grow up to fifty thousand square feet. The bylaw in Hubbardston reads like this. Marijuana establishment allowed by special permit in residential districts. Outdoor marijuana cultivation establishments licensed for tier two between five thousand and one and ten thousand square feet by special permit. That is your written definition of the word, of the, you know, the meaning. And what I tell you is I am licensed for tier two. I'm licensed for tier one. I'm licensed for tier three. I'm licensed for tier four. I'm licensed for tier five and I'm licensed for tier six. I'm licensed for all six. So as your bylaw reads, I'll read it to you again. It says, outdoor marijuana cultivation establishments licensed for tier two between five thousand and one and ten thousand square feet. I am licensed for tier two. I'm licensed for tier one. I asked the Cannabis Control Commission today at this exact point, and I said, please help me quick. And they came back to me and they said, in general, the commission interprets the regulations related to the squ- square footage as an allowable limit for growing. So a tier six license is allowed, is to grow, not my English, a maximum of forty to fifty thousand square feet. You could potentially grow less than that amount. So, or this amount. So they basically agree with me, I think. But we can have our lawyers duke it out. And I've got an agreement with the town of Harvest and I think it's pretty rock solid. Your definition and my definition are the same. I am licensed for tier two. So I could be licensed for tier two and stop there. But I could be licensed for tier three. I cover all the licenses, so. I mean, it, it just, it seems like you guys are reading into this and, you know, either way, we're planting marijuana. Um, it's, you know, the town is just gonna get less money because I need those extra ten thousand square feet. If I don't get that ten thousand square feet, we're now planting, Ron, you take ten thousand square feet out of there, we're planting like twenty-two hundred plants. So we're gonna lose, you know, twenty-five percent of our money. You're gonna lose twenty-five percent of your money. But, I mean, to read it that way is just, you know, kinda ridiculous to us, you know? We took it as the most you guys want in res- residential is ten thousand square feet. So we're not, we could put thirty thousand square feet back there. All we're trying to do is follow your bylaws. It says you want no more than ten thousand square feet in residential. Well, we went out of our way to follow that and we're only putting ten thousand square feet in residential. And we're gonna put as much as we can fit in the other area.
It's not what the submitted plan shows, Damon. So you, you, the plan shows you have a whole field in the residential district.
Oh, yeah, 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 I know, but where?
Well, then, what, what, that's what we reviewed.
Oh, yeah, but it's, okay, well, I thought I was very clear that, you know, we're gonna follow the bylaws of Hubbardston.
No, 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 no. Well, all right.
Yeah, well, that's an area. You know what it is? I understand. You guys saw the open area and thought we were coming in all marijuana. I understand.
It's crosshatch.
What?
Your plan that was submitted, C two oh one. It shows the grow area. It's crosshatch. It says grow area.
I underst- okay, all right. So this is what we would do. If we were growing ten thousand square feet and thirty thousand square feet. Oh, I understand. So the Cannabis Control Commission only measures your square footage of the actual canopy. So in that twenty-five, thirty thousand square feet of residential that we are enclosing, we're only allowed ten thousand square feet of canopy. So the plants are gonna be spread out way more than they are in the commercial zone where Ron just said, we're gonna have two foot little rows that are gonna be going like that in between them. Where in the residential, we'll have like three or four foot rows, we'll have the plants spread out. So it's the definition of canopy by this, by the CCC is the actual area you're growing in. So we could grow in a fifty thousand inc- enclosed area in the residential zone, but only have ten thousand square feet of canopy. Does that make sense? Sorry if I confuse you. I know, know what you're saying. We, we covered the thirty thousand square feet of residential. I understand. So we confused you guys a little. But yeah.
Your, your plans need to be a whole lot more.
I understand. We confused you guys. But yeah, I know, we're only doing ten thousand square feet in residential and forty thousand square feet in commercial, but that's the actual canopy.
So I'm gonna wanna see a blow up of that and I'm gonna wanna see the layout. I'm gonna see the calculation of canopy in the residential district.
That's what Ron's been asking me for, for like six months.
You're welcome, Ron.
Bill, okay, let's go on. I think this is, because now we're understanding it too, is a board better, some of these issues. Can you go on to some of the other issues, Bill? I'm particularly concerned about, like, the, the, um, the gravel versus the paving, the parking issues, the runoff issues, and how, again, the commercial regulate, our, our commercial provisions interface with the agricultural practice. Okay?
Well, I, yeah, um, you know, still, everything in the commercial district and all the activities growing the marijuana from our interpretation is a commercial activity subject to the zoning regulations and the site plan regulations, special permit regulations. So zoning bylaw says that parking spaces shall be nine by eighteen. They also say that parking shall have a permanent paved surface. Uh, and they talk about loading and unloading access and, and we have concerns regarding that. Those are carried in the zoning bylaw and they're not the planning board's purview to modify. The building inspector determines the number of parking spaces. And under the zoning bylaw, if the building inspector does not see a category and he's not willing or able to determine the number of spaces, the zoning bylaw defers that to the planning board, but only after being informed by the building inspector um, that he's not willing to do that.
Yes, what is the inspector said? What has Roland said about spaces?
He has not said anything about spaces to me.
Let's go back and talk about the difference between nine spaces and ten spaces and and what that means. There's, there is a difference, right, between?
There is.
Can you explain it to the board? Because I really read that paragraph three times and I didn't get it. So.
I'll go back to that.
Cause you, you had made, Damon had represented, he's gonna have maybe nine people max on the property and anytime working.
I think there was some people could be, uh, I think maybe that was including visitors. I think what, I'm, I could be misremembering, but I think we have those extra spaces in case, you know, you guys showed up at the CCC.
So parking.
Go ahead.
Parking areas for more than ten vehicles shall be constructed to the standards set forth in Hubbardston subdivision regulations. Drainage design and construction shall include interconnected catch basins with oil and grease traps, a formal drainage system design. If he is less than ten, then he does not need to comply with the subdivision regulations, but that we still. then he does not need to comply with the subdivision regulations, but that we still, in our zoning bylaws, say that parking area shall be paved and drainage shall be provided. Um, so what we're saying is that, very much like we did for the the, uh, self-storage place, you can do country drainage with ditches and drainage basins and other things like that, rather than going to the more formal catch basins, drainage pipes and those kind of things. Uh, but there is no comment, if, if they pave the driveway, they're gonna create more runoff, and they're gonna have to deal with drainage in one form or another. And it's our opinion that the building inspector is gonna require a paved driveway in a commercial district for commercial use. We also have concerns about the width of the driveway. It's only twelve feet wide, which isn't enough to get two vehicles passing one another. So we want, we want to know whether they're gonna be able to do operations in here. If they got a trailer coming in or going out, how that's gonna work.
Okay, um, so paving, I know you, you just mentioned thirty-six. Uh, and that, cause that same issue came up, uh, with the storage units, and there was a, um, the option he suggests, he was trying to, which we, we ultimately, we did not go with, but he talked about a milling option. Would this be one of those lower-use drives where a milling option might be more reasonable or acceptable?
That's the building inspector's call, not mine. He's, he said on that project, he did not consider millings to be a durable, permanent pavement.
Now, is he saying my entire driveway or just the parking area?
I'm looking something up.
Yeah. And is this something that I, I could get a variance for?
You can always apply for variance.
Awesome. I'm nervous I don't wanna do pavement. It's not the money. I just, I, I would think pavement's bad for the environment, isn't it? And do we really wanna pave over the ground?
I think Bill's reasoning was that you, you have a history of that being kind of a wet area, and if you have heavy vehicles going over, it tends to spread the, spread the gravel and silt into the wetlands, and that actually a pavement would be a better solution.
You don't anticipate, you know, I mean, if it was a problem, you can always move, the only thing that's really heavy, I guess, is the, the dumpster truck, and we always can move that, we can just move the dumpster. We can move that to the front of the property.
Well, that, I understand all those things, but that's not what your plan showed, and that's what we reviewed, what you gave us.
Come on, I mean, I can, I can change anything around. I don't, I'm not afraid to pave it. I just, I don't know why.
Well, if you pave it, then you, alright, so it says, off-street parking and loading areas shall be surfaced with asphaltic, the tuminous cement or other properly bound pavement so as to provide a durable, dustless service, and, and so be graded drain to dispose of all surface water accumulation within the area. And then, we also have a curb cut application that needs to be made to the DPW, and they have requirements for when you connect to a roadway. I think he requires a, a paved apron.
Yeah, we did that.
I'm trying to, okay. Alright, so we have the split lot issues, we have what are, what commercial zones we require in the way of pavements, generally, we've got you can have the open country drains, if you've got, if you can get away with nine parking spaces versus ten. So maybe we're narrowing down some of these issues. Can you, um, can you talk about where, where else our commercial provisions seem onerous to, uh, the applicant here, or more, more, I can say seem onerous, but more, are more restrictive than if you were just planting tomatoes? In strict agriculture?
All, all of the site plan and the parking regulations apply, but he doesn't actually have a structure um, unless they build a shed. So that parking and then if, if you do pavement, you gotta do drainage, formal drainage, and he's got issues with formal drainage, because he's in proximity to wetlands and outstanding resource waters, which means the drainage has to be designed to a higher standard.
Okay.
I think we are going to need clarification of the tier two, but that, if that's simply, he's gonna do a less dense canopy and in the residential district, and that seems to me to be permissible. Um, and then we are gonna want more, we've critiqued the article eight, environmental and community impact analysis, but that is, we want more clarification, and that's gonna be a pretty straightforward thing, then I think that we can reach out to them and ask them to address in a much greater level of detail within a revised plan. So these plans need to be revised, the statement said that things have happened since he submitted them back in January, but they're not reflected on the plans that we have, so.
I mean by things that happened, I'm sorry.
Well, you've gotten clarifications, you.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, no, since this, since you guys sent me back and what you wanted me to change, yeah, we're gonna change it. Yeah, sorry.
I, I do wanna give my colleagues here on the board a chance to weigh in, but where I would like to get to is if we, I, I don't think we, we have anything that we can approve tonight, the way it's presented. But if we can get to the point where we've narrowed the issues enough that between putting the two lawyers together, perhaps if we need to as a last resort, or, and the two engineering teams together, you know, we could get there, um.
Alice, we're gonna need.
But we are not saying y- y- you can't do this project because it, uh, because of uses. We're just saying it's a commercial zone and you, you gotta comply with like commercial parking and drainage and those kind of things.
The one thing, since you bring it up, I, I'm, I just wanna read two sentences. So this is what I sent this in my response. So the judge in Massachusetts, the state land judge, I, I realize what the town's attorney is saying. But the state judge said, it's very clear that a town that doesn't have a definition of what marijuana cultivation is, it defaults to agriculture, and I'll read that. And I, I, that's why I want our, you know, the people to get together, because we're not asking for, you know, exemptions to not pay taxes, but I think they can get it together, but here it is. Based on the accepted definition in the language of GLC sixty-one A, one dash two, and GL one-two-eight-one A, the growth or cultivation of marijuana is within the plain meaning of the word in agricultural use. Thus, where the bylaw does not offer a definition of agriculture, the growth or cultivation of marijuana fits into the bylaw subset of agriculture uses as of either the raising of crops or indoor, commercial, or culture, floriculture, depending on the nature of their particular proposed use. So basically, if you look at Harveston, Harveston doesn't have a definition of what marijuana act cultivation is. To give you an example, in Royalston, in Royalston's bylaws, they have a section that specifically says for these set of bylaws, marijuana cultivation is not considered agriculture. Some towns, cities in Massachusetts, they have that. Harveston does not. This town, wherever this happened, Charlton did not. So the judge said, based on nor- I'm not, this is not quoted, but the judge basically said, based on definition of marijuana cultivation, it's agriculture. I mean, it says it right there in a judge ruling in the state of Massachusetts. So there's no denying that.
Hey, Damon. Damon, so we, we asked that specific question to town council, and the town council's answer was what you just said applies to Charlton.
Yeah, it does apply to Charlton.
No, and it does not apply to Harveston.
It could apply to Harveston if we go to court.
Town, but for the benefit of the members of the planning board, the town council said that ruling does not apply to Harveston. It applies to Charlton.
Yes, unless we go to court, then it applies to Harveston, cause it's case law.
Well, you're not.
That's what I'm saying, that's, we need an attorney, because if we go to court, then we start citing case law. And then they're gonna say it's under appeal, it's not under appeal, maybe it is, maybe it isn't. But that's what I'm saying, I mean, you and I could talk about legal stuff all day long, but it's like, you can say she said this, they said that, but unless their lawyers are talking to my lawyers. I mean, I'm saying this, this is, I'm, I'm reading off of this, this is exactly what it says.
Damon, what, we, we're not saying y- you can't grow marijuana on this.
Oh, I know, but, but if it was agriculture, am I dealing with this pavement? Like, am I dealing with this pavement if the issue with it's agriculture?
Probably not.
What? No. Right, I'm not. Now, pavement goes on crushed stone, right?
Not always.
What? Well.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, yeah, so. Um, I mean, I do have, trying to get permission to put in some crushed stone, um.
Would still be, you would still be restricted, is my reading of, um, the general law, you would, you still have to protect the wetlands from the runoff.
Oh, definitely.
Can't get around those things. So I'm just thinking, we're not doing what Charlton was trying to, like, not let them grow marijuana at all, right? We're not doing that. We're just saying.
But if this wasn't commercial and this was agriculture, I could do drainage with crushed stone. That's all I'm saying. And I felt my intention in trying to like get around, you know, I'll just go get a variance. Who wants, who wants pavement?
Well, so that was a point I was gonna make. It, Alice, in all these conversations, there are a couple of rulings that we need from the building inspector. Um, and by the way, Damon, I was the one that told you what the building inspector told me about the trailers, so you can.
I wasn't gonna give you up. I wasn't gonna.
You can attribute that to me. It's a public hearing.
Alright.
But I think what needs to happen is you and I and the building inspector need to get three or four answers to pavement, whether he will accept the crushed stone, parking, number of parking spaces. We need to explore the trailers a little further.
Yeah.
Uh, to address the neighbor with regards to the trailers and the the pallet factory. That's a commercial district. Trails are allowed in a commercial district because it's a commercial activity.
Yeah.
Um, so. So those are just some of the things, um, I really think that you know, we should either invite the building inspector to a meeting, or we should have a meeting with him so that we can put half of this to bed.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'm willing to be accommodating, do whatever I have to do. I work great with instruction if you guys just wanna tell me what to do. Except for the pavement, hopefully we can get around that. But yeah, I work great with instruction, so anything you guys want me to do, I'll do. I just, I just need a clear path to get there.
We'll probably vote at the end of this to continue the hearing, so you don't have to open it up again, but I wanna give my board members a chance to ask their questions as well. So, board members, who wants to climb in here?
Alice, Bill Holmes, there was a lot of items, uh, brought up tonight, and I believe a lot of them were answered. It's unfortunate that a lot of these couldn't have been addressed prior to this meeting, uh, to maybe speed up the process, but, uh, hopefully we can get this to come to an end and move on with the session.
Okay, so basically, we've hit your major concerns?
Yes, dear.
Okay. Anybody else? Christopher Francois, anyone?
Yeah, ma'am chair, I have similar feelings that, uh, that it just, it sounds like there's some things we gotta get through here.
Okay.
Uh, I have similar concerns that have been raised by, uh, by yourself. Uh, and I do think that we do need some more time to be able to explore some of these items. Specifically, I am concerned about the assertion bait by Damon Schmidt. Um, and where he is, he is, uh, representing case law here and not disputing that he can go ahead and do so, but again, I don't think we're lawyers here. The only lawyer here would be yourself, uh, madam chair, uh, or former attorney, I should say, and I think that from that perspective, I, 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 I need to read more up, up on this here personally, to get a better understanding. I do have, I think, some clarification now with regards to tier one, tier two, as well as the tier six. I just wanna confirm with Mr. Schmidt that the total number of square feet of cultivation that you intend to uh, develop in the residential district will not exceed the ten thousand square feet, and therefore, let me just finish, please. So, therefore, the only, the, in the area that is commercially zoned, in that area, you would then, uh, take out your balance, but that would also not exceed your tier six. Is that correct?
Correct. We're going to attempt to get to forty thousand square feet of canopy in the commercial zone. Uh, but I don't think we're gonna get there. I think we're gonna fall, fall short um, just because of the new hundred-foot buffer with the, uh, with the, uh, the.
And so, and so therefore, the excess that you are thinking of getting into your total of tier six, which is what you are allowed, would therefore reside in the residential zone, but not to exceed the ten thousand square feet in the residential.
Correct. We would keep residential to only ten thousand square feet, including, you know, the fifty-foot buffer zone, uh, and then attempt to do forty thousand total in commercial to get to a total site of fifty thousand square feet.
Okay. Bill, uh, if I can ask you a quick question, because I know Mr. Bradcar earlier, uh, did mention something regarding the uh, setback from the main road. I, I don't quite get what he was saying, and maybe you had some more insight into that, and you can explain that again?
Well, he was saying that the commercial zone in this area extends five hundred feet back, but uh, I just scaled it off the, the surveyor's plan, and it's eight hundred feet from the center line of Route sixty-eight.
Okay. We, and, and I'm sorry, but I'm trying to understand the impact here, because that, that, that doesn't quite read, I mean, it, it doesn't quite jive still in my mind, so are you saying that they're limited to the, uh, the use of commercial zone up to a distance not more, not to exceed the eight hundred feet from the center of the sound road?
Right, eight hundred and one feet becomes residential agriculture.
Okay, gotcha. And but, but, but the, but the current, the current manner in which the lot has been divided would not exceed that, is that correct?
Well, it's a zone line, so it doesn't, it, it's, it, the, the road is kind of, uh, skewed, skewed to the, to the property, so.
Gotcha, okay. So those are areas that I need to still explore, and I mean, quite frankly, this is not something I can do within the next half hour, but I would like to get, take those areas of additional that do require additional time for me to absorb and, and, and listen to. And so I would also favor what, madam chair, you have proposed, which is basically to continue this here uh, at a future date.
Okay, I'll, Francois, I'll ask you for that motion in just a second. I just have a couple of things to try to, to try to just again, keep working on getting this to a manageable response. Um, I, I think one thing that we need, and Damon and Bill, you can chime in, is we do need a revised plan that shows sort of, at least in sometime conceptually, you figure out how to say it, but that would show uh, the, the thinner planting, the more spread out planting.
Yeah.
Um, then, and it would, thing, and it would contain, um, some of the things that have all be, already been agreed to. I understand, like, you're not going to put in a second hemp crop.
Yeah.
And the trees, and, um, you know, maybe if there's a more advantageous place or flaw where you could put the parking, you know? Um, that, that needs to clearly be defined, and where the dumpsters are, if you're gonna save heavy trucks going over, just really thought out, so that plan is as accurate as you can make it. And then, um, yeah, get, and then come back with an answer to what really needs to be paved and how the draining, the drainage can be handled. Uh, and if we can get to, to the electricity answer, I, I'm actually pretty sympathetic to uh, having electricity versus humming motors all the time. I, I don't know, I don't understand that total issue, if there's some sort of small structure that would accommodate housing for an electrical connection, or maybe there's some way to resolve that, but the electrical issue, what else, what else needs to be?
We need details on the fertigation system. So I wanna know what you're gonna do to protect the well. You, you're going to be required to have a double backflow preventer. I wanna see where your storage tanks are, and whether you're gonna use, what you're gonna use to supplement the pressure. And I definitely wanna see the cut sheets on the fertilizer. And then, whatever your fertilizer, maximum fertilizer rate would be through the fertigation system, just for one plant. We wanna know that, because the neighbors wanna know about whether we're, this is a water soluble fertilizer, which means if, if it gets, if it gets to the groundwater, it will dilute in the groundwater, but it will go in the groundwater, so we want to, to, to see the general strength of it and what its components are, and all the OSHA and EPA master um, criteria.
If you could do a description of the drip system, just, just like your, um, colleague described it?
Actually, I'd like a cut sheet. I'd like drawings of it.
Sheet, okay.
Man- manufact- manufacturer. Man, man, fact, manufacturer information.
That's not a problem.
Okay, so.
I'm trying to help you here.
Yeah, definitely. That, that, that's definitely not a problem. I'm, I'm actually looking at the, uh, the SDS sheets right now for the fertilizer. And it states, where was it? I was just looking at it. Um, right on the, right on the top, uh, point, 1.2, the use of substrate, it's a water soluble fertilizer per, for professional growing. And that states right in the first three lines of the SDS sheet for the J R Peters Jack Nutrient System that we will be using.
Okay.
Okay, and can we get a description of what a reefer truck looks like and the hours it would be there, some of what's been said here?
I didn't make up that name. That's really what they're called. Um, but I can tell you a picture of it. It, it's just like, you know, it's an 18-wheeler, like any 18-wheeler you've ever seen.
Alice, I believe these are.
With a chiller box on the front that keeps the interior of the, um, trailer to a certain set temperature that you would like.
Alice, Bill Holmes, our reefer trucks attract a trailer with a refrigeration unit built into it. And I believe in the beginning, uh, Mr. Schmidt stated that these are gonna be utilized probably in the month of September when they did the harvesting, and they'd probably be there operational in a week or two, maybe, portion of the time. Um, so it's not a long time, and it's not a lot of trucks in there running either. I want to keep that in mind also.
But, but think of this in terms of the planning board's perspective, where we're trying to write a special permit with limits which might be reasonably include, you know, it will be parked there not more than 12 weeks a year. Um, you know, because we're trying to walk that line of letting you do your business, but have the least impact we can. And unless you tell us what's reasonable and what you really need, then you know, that's hard for us to, to, uh, we don't, we don't want to kill your business. We want to make it, make it work if we can, right? So all of, all that information. So Bill, if you want to put together a list of, um, the additional things you need, and maybe if you can go through Damon's answers to your, uh, your first review, and tell him what, what seems to be agreed upon and what, uh, still needs to be done. And then meet with, um, if it could be possible, and also to meet with Roland before the fifteenth.
Alice, Bill Holmes, Tom Bracco raised his hand.
Okay, I'll let him speak. Uh, Mallory, you want to let him in?
Yeah.
Tom?
Okay, there we go. Uh, thank you, Bill, for letting me do that. I just want to give the, the planning board a little historical perspective about when we passed the bylaw, the marijuana bylaw in town, um, because I was involved with that. We, when we were writing that, we did talk to the CDC and we talked to the Attorney General's office. And regarding the 10 and 20,000 square foot tiers, okay, they were saying to us at the time that if you're in tier one or tier two, if you want to get to a bigger place, you have to apply to them for, for a new license, okay? So that's how it works. So the reason, what Damon, Damon's reasoning is that we're gonna have a tier six, but we could do a tier uh, one if we wanted to. That was explicitly shut down by the CDC because we wouldn't have passed it had it been like that. If you apply for a si, for a six, you have to conform to all the tier six applications.
Be a tier two and grow. The, the CCC just sent me an email today. It said exactly that in their email. It said, so a tier six license is allowed to grow a maximum 40,000 to 50,000 square feet. You could potentially grow less than this amount. They, they.
You can, there's no question that you can grow less than that amount.
Yeah.
But you are governed by this, by the higher tier. So therefore, with the town of Hubbardston, when they put those tiers in place with being in a zoning area, it was basically so to prevent these big areas going into residential areas. That's all I'm saying. I don't know.
Yeah.
That, that's why we, that's why we did it the way we did do it.
Right. And the, the Cannabis Control Commission has a thing called relegation. And they reserve the right to decrease a licensed tier operator if they, uh, sell less than 70% of what they produce or other criteria that they've identified. So that's why we have said that you get, you're allowed three licenses, a total of three licenses. Uh, but the total canopy can't exceed 100,000 square feet. And we do think that you need a tier six and a tier two license.
Yeah, that's exactly what happened. Be- because the question came up to the Cannabis Commission when we were doing this. Well, why do they even have these tiers? If they're, if it's, everyone would just apply for a tier six, and then you can grow less than that. They actually control what you grow in each of those tiers. If you do less that over a consistent period of years, they'll reduce your, your license. And if you do more than that, you have to apply for a new license. So I think that's kind of a, um, I, I don't think that argument would actually hold up. At least that's when we wrote the bylaw. That's what we were planning on. That, and that's why we did it.
And, and again, yeah, we recommend legal counsel at least take a look at it.
Yeah.
But Tom, Tom, to Mr. Bracco, I, I don't, I think the difference here is that this is a split lot.
Yeah.
You know, it's not like, Bill, to, to grow, have one field that's an entire residential area in one field and a entirely commercial area.
I, and that's, we asked that question as well, Alice. We, we did. And they said, if they're gonna do that in a split lot, then they would have to apply for two separate licenses.
Well, that was, madam chair, this is a point that I'm, I'm trying to, and I'm struggling with at this point in time. And that is, is that we do have, we, we do have stated this evening that from, 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 from Damon Schmidt, that he plans on growing not more than a tier two in the residential district. And to fully exploit whatever he can in the commercial district. And one question that I am struggling with at this point in time is, is are these two separate permits that we need to look at? And I'm not, I'm not saying that I know the answer. That, that's part of my, that's my struggle at this point in time. This is why I think that this evening, this is not something that I can resolve in my mind, because I think we need to ask a lot of these questions so that we're not going down a path that is erroneous.
But that's, that's the exact question we asked the CDC and, and Attorney General, and that's exactly the answer they said.
I, I understand that, Mr. Bracco, but my, my point here is, is that this is, and, and I, I, I agree that you at that point in time were part of the planning board that was exploring this here. I, I do not have that documented fact. And I think for all intents and purposes, not, none of our board members have that, unless you have something very specific that can state that, that you received that information and you can actually share it in a form of a communication that you may have officially received. At this point in time, for all intents and purposes, that is, that is your word. And, and I, and I respect it. I'm not saying.
Yeah, I understand. Yes, it's correct.
I'm just simply saying that from my perspective, that is the part that I'm struggling. And I need to, as a result of this here, Alice, uh, madam chair, I, I, I need to ask some, some, some real poignant questions, which I quite frankly think that we, as a board, are potentially obligated to take not only to the town administrator, but also to take to the legal counsel. And Damon, this is not something that I'm trying to be obstructive. I just want to make sure that we're going down a path where we are not afterwards going down into a opening up a door and, and going through it and not being able to justify the actions that we ta, that we took, okay?
No, no, I know you're very thorough. And no, I definitely respect that.
Damon, provide the, um, CCC opinion you are reading to us to send it to Mallory and Bill, okay?
That would also be very helpful. Yes, thank you.
Yeah, and what I can do is, I mean, I, I email them all the time. I mean, why don't I do this? Why don't I email them a better question? What happens if it's in split lots? And we'll get right to this answer because I cannot imagine in any circumstance, they would have you do two licenses. And we'll get an answer right away, and they'll say, no, it's one license. That could be probably a better email. But I'll do both.
When you put together the question.
Yeah.
Before we send it to the CCC, send it.
What am I saying to you?
Drafted to me and to, to Bill. All right. So we're all on the same page, because if we can get the CCC to answer it through their legal counsel.
Yeah.
You know, on.
May I suggest something, madam chair? I think that prior to having a, a communication like that sent, I think this is, this, if this is gonna be a communication that we're going to be reviewing also, we just need to make sure that we are wording it in such a way that both parties, in this case, the planning board, as well as Damon Schmidt, as the representative of Royal Farm, understand very clearly what it is that we're setting. But I still think that, that we have the prerogative on our end. Uh, and maybe doing also the due diligence of actually working with the town administrator and with our, uh, with our legal counsel here in town, just to make sure that we are also addressing this here.
I agree. We got to start somewhere. So let's.
I can, I can simply tell the board that I've gone through the frequently asked questions for growers and for communities at the CCC. And whenever it comes to a question of zoning, they defer to local legal counsel because they don't answer questions of zoning. They answer questions pursuant to the mass general laws and their regulations for marijuana cultivation. So I really don't think that they're going to answer a zoning question relative to the tier one, tier two, and et cetera, et cetera.
And I would tend to agree with you because this is really more of a local issue. And so as a result of that, we ourselves will have to therefore work with our legal counsel to make sure that we, as a board, put forth the proper, uh, interpretation as to what our bylaws would potentially uh, indicate that we ought to request and, and potentially demand from any applicant, uh, again, okay? A, a, as I said, I think there's a lot of open questions here. This is not an open shut case. There's a lot of gray areas here. And I think that from that perspective, there's a lot more due diligence. As, as a result of this, madam chair, at this point in time, I would like to request that we close this here and that we put this, uh, put a motion forth to have a continu, to continuous, to continue this, uh, special hearing at a future date. When I say closure, it's, it's close it for this evening with the understanding that this is a continuation uh, in, in the future, given, given the hour and the other items that we have in the agenda.
Okay. Um, so Francois, you, you want to make a motion, uh, to continue this public hearing until what date? Do you want to go beyond the next meeting?
I think, I, I, I think that, uh, we need to minimally extend it to the next meeting, but in my opinion, there's a lot of complexity in here. And we should probably grant ourselves potentially another month and a half, at least.
No, I, 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 I need a vote next meeting on the 15th. And we gotta get all this done. I, I don't want to wait a month and a half. I want to, I want to get on the phone with Roland tomorrow or Monday.
I'm sorry, but at this point in time, I would ask that you please respect the chair, uh, and, and, and when, when you're supposed to.
Oh, sorry.
At this point in time, this is, this is a motion that you have your opinion, which I respect. At the same time, the planning board has the, has the prerogative as to how far it might continue. We're not saying that this will have to take place all the way up to a month and a half, but we just want to make sure that we're keeping the avenues open, should it be so required.
Well, and we can extend it again. It's a very short time. It's two weeks to get the answer to all of these questions.
And I don't think, I don't think that I'm going to be able to do that because I've got the other, the other one across the street that I need to get the review on. And, uh, there, we need to get that, we need to get to Roland. I think it would be beneficial to get to Roland after we get to town council. I think we need a month.
All right. Francois, what is our, what is our first meeting in, uh?
Can I interrupt again? I mean, I'm gonna, I'm gonna miss my season if we just keep waiting a month. I mean, you know, I turned this special permit in 45 days ago. I mean, you know, we could have handled this a month ago.
Damon, I'm willing to, I'm willing to grant, I'm willing to take a motion. It's not up to me. To extend it in two weeks. I think it's an awful lot of answers. You're trying to get the things to get resolved in two weeks, but.
Meeting that we have in May is May 6. There is obviously the, the open, uh, option to have a second meeting in April here.
Well, doesn't mean we can't put it on the agenda. You want to make a motion to extend to, uh, I'm trying to think. I, I guess maybe.
Madam Chair, Bill Holmes.
Yep, Bill.
Um, can I do a friendly amendment to Francois's motion to maybe put it on the agenda for the 6th? And if the answers are on, are not all answered, the questions aren't all answered for the 6th, we can continue it to another date in April, or excuse me, in May.
Okay, so this does not, this means you could all, I, the problem is this, if we did have the answers by the 15th, and you extended to the 6th, then it won't even be brought up on the 15th, right?
Correct.
So maybe you want, maybe we want to, sort of courtesy to him, extend the 15th and, you know, see where we stand, what we can do in two weeks. But it seems, uh, like in a very.
I think it's a lot to do, uh, madam chair, but I also want to give the benefit to Mr. Schmidt to get his business rolling. And maybe if everybody works hard on this, they can get it done. If not, we can put it to the next meeting.
All right. So, um, somebody want to make a motion to extend this hearing until April 15?
Madam Chair, at this point in time, what I'd like to do is, is I'd like to put forth a motion that we, as a planning board, extend this, uh, hearing all the way up to April the 15th, with the understanding that at that point in time, we will address what has been completed and if necessary, uh, pursue potential further extensions if they were necessary.
Okay. Is there a second?
Madam Chair, Bill Holmes, I'll second that.
Any further discussion on the extension motion? Hearing none, will, uh, vote, lived all eye.
Tiger, aye.
Bill Holmes, aye.
Did Christopher get in there?
Yes, Monroe, aye.
Okay, so, uh, the motion passes, uh, the hearing has been extended until April 15. Thank you, everybody, and we'll be in touch to try to.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night. Um, quickly, I know it's really late. I just have a few other really quick announcements, um. It, it, just, just to sort of keep you up to date, um, is in the documents list under.
Alice.
Yes.
You skipped over Bowie, 56 Gardner Road for the zoning.
Okay. Where is, is it on here?
Yep, it's right under the hearing. It's under B for action items.
It's right there.
I don't know. I must have printed an old, uh, version of this. Anyway, okay. Um, so, right. And I did tell Mallory, remind me. So the CCC asks for this letter, which happened with the 69 lot, where they basically, um, it's a, it's a criteria before they can finish their process at the CCC of, of granting this license. And it is a basic letter, form letter, that we send that says the lot conforms to, um, the zoning, the, the project is allowed in the zone and has sufficient area for the setbacks. Um, anyway, it doesn't say you grant a license or a special permit. I tried, when we had the other lot, to qualify the yes, it's allowed language, and the CCC came back and said, no, we just want to know it's an allowed use there, and there's room for the setbacks. So I'm not even sure we have to, we, I don't think we voted to send that letter last time. It was just a requested letter. Um, but I wanted to, to say that, that, that request is coming, and given the way that we've had that interpreted by the CCC in the past, um, I think that I can send that in as the planning board chair because it isn't a commercial zone and marijuana facility proposed is allowed in that zone. So I just want to update you on that. If there's any objection to that, uh, I can bring it forward on the 15th, but it's kind of a standard letter, the certification that they're looking for. So if you trust me to do that, I'll just go ahead and do that.
Madam Chair, Bill Holmes, I'm all set, set with that.
Okay. Okay, and I did run it by, um, you know, the zoning enforcement officer two last time, and I will contact him again to let him know. All right. And then under other new, so.
Oh, you hadn't gotten anything as of this afternoon, have you?
Uh, you know, I have not yet. And, um, Alice, last meeting, you asked me to, um, do the due diligence, put the map together, kind of showing what the distance was. And I sent that to Mallory. I'm not sure if, I think I CC'd you guys, just so you guys have obviously all seen that, uh, that map.
The map with the two, the fencing, where?
No, 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 I'm sorry. The map that, that just shows the distance from the schools. I believe that's also, like, I sent her a whole.
Yeah, you have, you have a copy of that, Alice. If you need me to send it over again, I'll find it again and resend it. Yeah, you have, you have a copy of that, Alice. If you need me to send it over again, I'll find it again and resend it.
Okay, so I think we can send it, but you, you, you have to understand that this doesn't mean, you know, you can skip the special permit or anything. It just.
No, no. No, so what, what this does is it just helps, um, like, I'm, I'm right at the top of the queue. With my, you know, with the positioning of my application, this just kind of takes one thing out of the process where it's like, they send a letter, we send it, you know, they send it back, like, it's, the, the zoning is correct for my lot, and it's just giving them that information ahead of time.
Which is the area for the, yeah. Okay, so that letter last time came into the town administrator and then was kicked over to me.
Okay.
Did not come to the planning board.
No, I've been in David's office almost every day looking forward to. So not to town administrator right now, but we haven't seen it yet.
So, can you call the CCC and ask them?
Yep.
Request that letter of the, either send it, I think they'll only send it to the town administrator.
Okay.
Please send it out so that we can get it out in the format they want.
And I just have one more request while I'm here, if it's okay. Um, I know everybody's really busy. And, um, you know, things are crazy with, uh, the pandemic and just everything, but, um, you know, I think, Alice, everyone is, you're especially sensitive that this is extremely time sensitive since these are outdoor crops. And, um, you know, like, I, just, this is a request to Bill, like, please, uh, I would love a little more time than Damon had to review, uh, the comments from Place Associates on my submission. Like thirty-six hours isn't enough to, you know, install a garage door opener, let, let alone talk about such a lengthy review. So it'd be helpful to us and it's, um, uh, I just feel like it's the right thing so everybody can actually talk about things. And we're not spending two or three days in a crash course with engineers, uh, you know, water specialists, wetlands specialists, everybody trying to just to sort of address all these major things, which are, you know, fairly substantial on all of Bill's reports. So that's all, like, maybe a week would be nice and or just not, not two days, if that's okay.
We get to it as quickly as we can. That's all I can tell you.
Okay, I'm, I'm just making a request. It's, you know, I mean, you obviously, you understand it puts us in a tough spot to respond to anything with thirty-six hours.
Well, you know, two weeks is a pretty short amount of time to turn something around. And of course, Damon, we had the issue with his is we needed the information from town council as to what is the basis of our review. That already applies to yours, so we don't need to worry about that. But.
Excellent.
I will get it out as quickly as we can, but.
Thank you. I just know, I mean, I, I have a lot of friends.
I'm the only one.
Uh, certainly. And, but I just, I know, I have a lot of friends who also are, have submitted special permits for marijuana. You know, there's no real hydrology with these things. Like, you know, these are not, this is not a very complicated special permit. So just, you know, any, any extra time you can afford us to respond is huge because, you know, we're, we're gunning for the summer. We don't wanna kick this, you know, I mean, I know, like, every, we would like to talk, but you know, it's like, this is after July fifteenth, like, it's over. The, the, the season is over. So that's just, I'm just like, you know, that to be really clear, like, every, every second counts if, you know, in consideration. That's all.
As fast as I can.
Thank you.
Mr. Bowie, one question for you is we did get a note from Mr. Bracco, and I didn't address it because it involved your property and not the one up tonight, but it involves a boundary dispute.
Uh huh.
I, can you get that resolved for us?
Yes. So, uh, Tom and I kept the tire back and forth, uh, at the fence line a couple of days ago, and we were pointing at the marker that he was referring to in that letter. Alf Berry is gonna come out and flag the property for the, uh, the lot lines, the fence lines, the setback lines and everybody. And Tom and I and whoever else wants to come, uh, come over and check it out while Alf's there is more than welcome to. And we're gonna lay everything out exactly where it's supposed to be. So everybody's happy. What I told Tom was what he's concerned about, which is a, a marker, which is, I think it's misplaced on, on the plan, but it basically affects the egress of his cows regardless of where Alf stakes it. His cows are, are not gonna be affected by my project. They will walk freely through that gate that they have been walking through for twenty-two years.
But if it affects the boundary line, it needs, the plan needs to be fixed to reflect it.
Sure.
The ground, right?
That's a, that's a very.
You get to us, you know, because we, we don't drag our feet. Really, we don't.
Of course. No, no, I'm just, I'm just saying, I didn't, like, I think Alf placed that pin there. So, I mean, a professional put it there and, but whether, I'm not disputing it. I don't, it, whether that's my property or not, I actually don't care. Like, I want Tom's cows to, to walk freely.
But it, but it matters where, you know, you have to have setbacks back and front, right? So the plan has to be right.
Sure.
Get it. So get it clarified and get that information to us.
Yep, absolutely.
You can send it to Bill. Okay, just send it to him. He'll get it to both of us. Okay, great. All right. We'll do what we can.
Thanks so much.
Letter from the CCC and we will get it out.
I really appreciate the time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, uh, next issue, guys, is I had an inquiry. It's in the documents regarding lot seventy-two on Selfridge Lane. You can read it. It's a gentleman that the situation is the road, as far as we can tell, it's not even listed on the chapter ninety list, but it's kind of a two-house road that goes off Cruz Road. And it dead, and it stops being a marked road and becomes a dashed line road. At exactly the point this guy wants to buy a thirty-eight acre lot. And he's trying to argue he shouldn't have to build the road. He should be able to work off the paper or the unapproved road. You can read our back and forth, um, on that. He may, we may see him again. We may not. I don't know. I do think.
Madam Chair, Bill Holmans.
Yes.
Just a little history here, being on the zoning board of appeals. I believe we did get a request quite a few years ago for that same area. Uh, that it was proved that that lot, that road was discontinued many years ago. And there is no frontage. Past the lots that are being utilized now.
If you have any further information on the discontinued vote, it would be helpful.
I couldn't hear something else cut in there. Sorry.
Yes, I don't know. I'm trying to work off two laptops tonight.
Oh, okay.
If you could. Yeah, if you have any information on where that discontinued vote is. We, we are trying to get a grant to clean up the road mess list, the, the mess regarding roads in this town.
Right.
Um, but yeah, if you have any more information.
I was just, I, I sat in a hearing for that property many years ago and he got denied because it was not a town road.
Yeah, I think that's, I told him he can come to us with subdivision plan that extends the road, you know, even if he just extends it into like called a sad dead end, but he's gotta have frontage for a house. So.
Correct.
Um, anyway, he may be backed and tried to, but that's good to know that it was a ban. I'm just trying to, you know, I'm not, I get these calls and I sometimes field them and then I, uh, you know, I never know whether that's the right thing or whether I should make everybody come and address it to you, you know, the committee as a whole, but at least I'm disclosing what I did. I also wanted to say I attended an economic development committee meeting on March twenty-fifth, which, um, on behalf of our board and all the boards, which is a really interesting interface where town people could send in their questions. And there were tremendous number of questions about how, how do you do home kitchen project, products and other sort of home businesses, uh, among many other things. So, anyway, I just wanted to tell you, I attended that. It was, it was interesting and likely to be a group that gets together again. Um, I also wanted to say that the, the lot fifty-seven, the gravel pit lot, the, uh, town administrator did sign the, um, the, the document for going to the phase two environmental study. And they estimate that that should be done in, in the next month or so. It's not a very long timeframe. Um, and then a question from Mallory. Um, in the documents list, maybe this is my ineptitude, but when I clicked on fifty-six Gardner Road in the documents list, nothing came up.
Yeah, I was hoping I would have the letter for Bowie.
Okay, so post that as soon as you.
Yeah.
And then send the, I mean, if it comes out before the agenda, when you post it, send the board a note.
Okay.
Posted it, because these things take forever to read. It's just killing us to get these things at the last minute, you know, so hopefully. Um, all right. And I, I, there are a lot of other things on here, but nothing else I wanna take up tonight unless anybody else has anything they wanna take up.
Madam Chair, there's one item which I'd like to, uh, address to the board, and that is, is this past Monday, the, uh, select board met and, uh, Pat Gerard, who is a member of the select board, uh, did again try to address the situation with, uh, two forty-eight, uh, Gardner Road. And it is my understanding that it has been clearly clarified that the zoning enforcement officer will be, uh, informed that there is a bylaw on the books in the town of Hubbardston restricting the total of number of unregistered, uh, vehicles that a person can have on their personal property and lot. And so therefore, there is a reason for the zoning enforcement officer to go to forty-eight and review the situation, situation there.
Excellent. And, uh, that's great. So they're, they're taking it on and they're gonna notify.
That is my understanding as to whether or not that has happened or when it will happen. And I just not get something that I don't.
Yeah, that's great. I did, I did have that written as a note because I knew you did that, sat through that meeting and.
One other item I wanted to quickly bring up, and it's, I don't know, it's from a timing perspective. I do recall that the Cattistos had at one point in time, uh, had put together a request, or I should say, it's actually, um, forgot the gentleman's name. Uh, regarding the gravel pit, they had a, um, they have something that is expiring in two thousand twenty-one. And I don't know if they have actually, uh, requested for an extension uh, for the, uh, the, the work that they potentially might be doing, uh, for their mitigation, uh, the remediation work that these take place at their, at their old pit.
I've made their lawyer aware of the date. The deal is they have, the work has to commence by that date. And I think the date is in August, actually, or sometime. But I will look it up and I will send the, uh, the lawyer another note and tell him, you know, we would, if he wants to apply for an extension, we, you know, now would be the time probably. I think they do still plan to do it. Um, I put a note, Mallory asked, put a note to and asked me, it's easy enough to write that email to the guy and ask. I mean, it's up to them to do it, but. All right. Any other, uh, items of business for tonight? If not, does someone wanna make a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair, Bill Holmans.
We have one just quick thing, nomination papers.
Yes, I asked Mallory to address this.
So we have two open slots coming up on the board. Um, and just so everyone's aware, nomination papers need to be pulled by four twenty. Um, so far, we've had one person come forward and pull papers for the planning board. Um, so it's a Peter Jeff who has pulled the papers. Um, but if anyone knows anyone who wants to sit on the board or if anyone is interested in rerunning, um, you need to get in contact with the town clerk, um, sooner than later, so you can get your signatures.
Who's the term expires? John Demalius?
Yep. And then Christopher is only on as the, um, the point. Yes.
Well, Christopher, you have to run. You know that, right?
I, I am expecting to pull papers.
Thank you. We really need you on our board.
Alice, were you worried?
Uh, I, I just don't know about John. I haven't heard from him either. So, uh, I'll get in touch with him.
Thank you.
All right.
Alice.
Thank you. All right. So now a motion to adjourn.
Alice, Bill Holmans, I will make that motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, this is Francois. I would like to second that motion.
Okay, not debatable. Lived all eye.
Tiger eye.
Holmans eye.
Monroe eye.